But yeah, I can see everybody.
Yeah, you're gone now. Drew should be joining us, eh? And then we can get this show on the road.
Somebody clipped your law for me, so they must be messing with it.
Boy, this has been a long day. This time change, this time changes, you know, old people don't sleep anyway. And with this time change, I'm getting up at three, three, two thirty, three, three o'clock in the mor- three thirty in the morning.
Yep, I know the feeling.
Oh, you're not my age, though.
Well, I'm not your age, but I, I have a hard time with it, but eventually I'll be fine. I wish we'd just stay on this one. I like this one the best.
Yeah, stay on either one. I don't care.
Yeah.
Pick one.
Right.
So Drew, I am ready to start this meeting, but somebody has taken over and turned my video off, which I'm not able to correct that or change that. Are we able to start without my video?
Let me, Brock, Brock, can you hear us? Do you know what happened to his? I went to the participants and it's not showing his camera. And of course, it's not showing him in the mayor's office. You know what happened?
Lost Brock.
When I first signed on, he was on there. So it's just been in the last little bit.
Yeah, I saw him too.
Well, there we go. Somebody's moving. Moving the mouse around.
Thanks, guys.
Then there were three. We lost Van, too.
They came on and started moving around.
There's the council chambers.
Yeah, gentlemen, just give us a minute. The IT guys are working on, they shut him down. Trying to bring it back up and hopefully it'll restart and we'll. Soon as he's on, we'll be ready to go.
Hey Drew.
Yes.
Doug. Is that Autumn Mall really gonna happen?
Probably ninety-five percent chance yes.
Okay.
All right, everybody, I'm back on. Everybody can see me and hear me, okay? And if it ever. Perfect.
Good for.
This is Commissioner Hanson. Tonight I'll be filling in for Commissioner Smith. He wasn't able to make it. So go easy on me. This will be the planning commission meeting for November fourth, two thousand and twenty. I've asked Commissioner Holly to offer us an invocation, followed by Commissioner Shield will lead us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Holly.
Heavenly Father, thank you for your many, many blessings. Thank you for the privilege of setting on this commission with these fine gentlemen. Please help us to make the decisions that are beneficial to this community and our neighbors and, and good for Washington City overall. Please guide us in our thinking and in our words. Help us to be civil. And direct. Thank you for this community. Thank you for our country. Thank you for our president, whoever he is. We say these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Is there a flag? Go for it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
There it is.
We did it. You wanna do it again?
Okay. Then we'll move on to item number one A. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda for this evening, November fourth, two thousand and twenty.
So moved.
All commissioners in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any commissioners opposed? All right, motion, the agenda passes. Number two A. Approval of the minutes from our meeting on October twenty-first. If y'all take a second or if you have any comments or corrections that need to be made.
I'll abstain from that one since I wasn't at the last one.
Okay. Attention from Commissioner Fitzonfo.
This is Commissioner Holly. Seems like that meeting just ended. Um, that was a nice, that was a good long one. But I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the meeting, uh, October twenty-one, twenty twenty.
Do I have a second for that?
I get that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Holly and a second by Commissioner Shield. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, move. The minutes are also approved for our meeting October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty. Item number three, are there any declaration or extensions of conflict?
Number six A, um, just like to, uh, note that I live less than a mile from six A.
Seven A, I, I live probably, uh, about a mile from seven A.
Okay, neither of you have any financial conflicts in either of those items?
No, and I'm not abstaining. I'm just making it matter of record.
As a matter of record, I also live within a mile of number six A. There by Stavey Farms.
Yeah, and I do too. I live within a mile of both of them.
Okay. So it looks like we have full participation tonight on, uh, the agenda items. Let's move on to agenda item number four A. This is consideration and recommendation to city council. The Washington Dam Industrial Final Plat located at Araby Ridge Court and Washington Dam Road. The applicant is Mellon Development.
Can everybody see that exhibit okay on your screens?
I can see it.
Okay. That's what matters. The applicant has stated is requesting approval of the final plat for the Washington Dam Industrial Subdivision. This particular subdivision is proposing eight lots on an area covering four point seven seven acres. The zoning at this location is the light industrial or I one zoning designation. Um, preliminary plat. Actually wasn't approved on April twenty-second. That's a misprint. I'll have that taken care of. It was earlier this year, but I do not believe it was April twenty-second. Uh, staffs reviewed the requested proposal and finds proposed final plat conforms to that approved preliminary plat. Staff therefore would like to recommend that the planning commission. Recommend approval of the final plat for Washington Dam Industrial Subdivision to the city council. That'll be based on, of course, the findings and subject to the conditions. Uh, and they are the standard five conditions for final plats. Nothing extra was added. And so I'll be glad to answer any questions the commissioners have on Washington Dam Industrial Subdivision.
This is Commissioner Holly. Drew, is that that little subdivision right below the, um, the, the Washington Dam Road?
Storage.
Storage places, yeah, right in front of the Cox property?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I remember talking about this. They sure moved a lot of dirt.
Yes, they did. Well, probably a lot of rock and some dirt.
Yep.
So Drew, that parcel A. It's forty, forty-four feet wide. Is that just an access to the back?
That's all that it is, yeah. And the general note calls that out. Um, that that's, it's just an access to get to the property here. You can see the property line.
Yeah.
See where my arrow is up here and then the other one. So the end of the cul-de-sac gets you into the piece up here. And this one gets you into the piece right here. Right behind, you know, lots four and three. And that's all that is, is an access, yes.
Do the same people own all that land?
Yes.
Okay.
What are they doing for walls? Fencing?
Um, because everything around it was the same zoning, there's no requirement.
Okay. Does that mean they're not doing any fencing?
I don't know. We don't, if it's not required, we don't, yeah, bring it up, but I would imagine, I'll guarantee there will be some block walls built.
Um, yeah.
Just for security purposes.
And, and Drew, for my, uh, for my edification here, the light industrial L one. Kind of remind me what, what can be put on L one properties?
Well, that's kind of a large variety of things, but it's basically, um. One of the best examples is like a contractor's storage yard, say. Um, someone could put an automotive repair business in an I one. Um. Trying to think of some of the others, but it's, it's basically just light manufacturing. You know, we do have a definition for that. And it's usually, um, the assembling of products that are already pre-premade somewhere else, like in an I two. Um, so the I one is more of just like, like assembly, manufacturing of small things such as that, so. That pretty much covers it in a general nutshell.
Run a small supply warehouse out of there, something like Brady Industrial, something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
How much more of that hill are they gonna take down, Drew? Do you know? And how are they gonna shore that up between them and the town storage?
I'll let Brandon, uh, jump in on that. He's probably more, more apt to answer that. Brandon?
Ask that question one more time. I'm sorry.
Um, I was just curious, cause I drove by there today and they had a big old track hoe up there banging on, on the rocks. So I was just wondering how much more of that hill. They're gonna take down and what are they gonna do to, to shore it up between them and the storage units?
So the current, the current plans between, uh, the storage units and the, and the lots showed a, a tier slope. From the geotechnical engineer. Um, they've got quite a bit of dirt left to get out there, but now they're starting their steps and bringing it down that way.
Okay.
So that was re- re- uh. Recommendation from the geotechnical engineer is we've got, I believe there's three or four steps coming down through there. And then each one of these sites, um, going back to Commissioner Shield's, um. Question was each, each pad will have their own site plan that they'll have to get approved. So each one, one, two, three, four, you know, they'll have to come in and get their own, their, each individual set of plans approved for the city.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments for staff? If not, I look for a motion for item four A.
I can do that. Make a motion, um, to recommend approval. To city council for the final plat at Washington Dam Industrial Subdivision. Located at approximately ten sixty-five East Washington Dam Road. With the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Commissioner Holly, I second that.
Can I have a motion on item four A by Commissioner Fitzonfo? For the second, Commissioner Holly, with the individual holding, uh, voting, excuse me, uh, Commissioner Fitzonfo?
Aye.
Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Commissioner Musso?
Aye.
Commissioner Shield?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hanson, I also will aye. Motion passes unanimously. Move on to the next item. Item five A, a plat revision. Five A is consideration and recommendation to city council for the Brio Phase Three G preliminary plat located approximately Brio Parkway and Main Street. The purpose of this revision is to show single-family detached units versus single-family attached units in this phase. Application is Coal West, item five A.
Gentlemen, I apologize. Kathy, did we forget to put the important part on this one in? I'm. Or maybe I can't find it, the plat itself.
Isn't it?
Well, it's, I wonder with the red lines, isn't it?
No, that's, that's, um, this one?
That's a fourth.
That's right.
But it's the one with the green?
What's that one on the lower left-hand corner, Drew?
Well, that's, that's more, it's just showing there, and I was gonna get into this in our, our discussion, but, um, let me. Trying to think of the best way to get a plat on here, because I think that we might have made a mistake. And not put the plat on. We had the other exhibits that I wanted on here as part of their conditions. Um, but let me. I'm trying to find a way that I can get this on my computer. Hmm.
Drew, when was the, uh, the original plat and that they're seeking amendment two? Maybe we can go back to that file.
Well, it, it's changed quite a bit because we're amending it from a townhome layout.
Yeah.
To a single lot layout and, um. You know what I'm, I'm gonna do? Can you guys give me just a break? I, I'm gonna just go talk with Kathy real quick. We may. Move on to the next items and come back to this one. That'll give her time to get a copy of it in and passed out. So just in case we can take a, a break for just one minute or so, I'll be right back.
I make a motion, we break for a minute or so.
Thank you.
Smoke 'em if you got 'em.
So who knows the details of the fire that's happening there on Pine Mountain?
Not I.
Neither.
At one point last night, that was pretty impressive. Far as the flames, how big they were.
I was told they were just gonna let it burn to an inaccessible.
Yeah.
Yeah, I drove, I drove my wife to the airport the other morning and we looked up and it was raging. You know, yesterday morning.
About eight or nine last night. It was raging big. I mean, you could definitely see it was a. It was a big fire up there. Does anybody know how far away Pine Valley, the housing community actually is on the other side of that mountain?
Jeez.
I don't know, commissioners, but let me give you an update. Kathy's downloading that right now. What I'd like to do is if we could just, uh, ask that this be, um. Table that only tell at the end of the agenda. That gives her time to get it in, get it forwarded to you. In your packets. And so what we'll have you do is in a little bit, you guys know how to refresh your packets?
No.
Well, it may not matter. I'll bring it up on my screen.
Yeah.
And, um, we, at least you'll have vision of it. It's a simple, it's a simple amendment. But I'd need to have it on, on the screen and done for all the minutes. So if we could, just, uh, someone make a motion. That will, you know. Leave this item, but actually I think we need to make a motion to. Put it behind seven A. Gives Kathy plenty of time to get that done.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion for that, gentlemen?
So moved.
All in favor of the motion which would be making item five A postponed until later this evening after?
Did you get a second? Second. There we go.
There we go. First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. We will move agenda item five A to the end of the agenda this evening. And revisit that. We'll now move on to agenda item number six A, which is a preliminary plat. This will be a public hearing for consideration and recommendation to city council. For the Oak Grove Plat located approximately two forty west, twenty-eight hundred south. The applicant is Dave Nassal.
Nazel.
Nazel. I'm sorry, Dave. David Nassal.
Thank you. As stated, applicant is requesting approval of the preliminary plat for Oak Grove subdivision. The applicant is proposing eight lots and the area of coverage is seven point two seven acres. The zoning at this particular location is a single-family residential fifteen thousand square foot minimum or R one fifteen zoning designation. Uh, the surrounding zoning is R one fifteen to the west. Residential agricultural one acre minimum to the east and Washington County zoning to both the north and the south. This pr- uh, particular proposed area was recently annexed into the city. Uh, earlier this year, that's why you have Washington County, County zoning on the north and the south. Now, the proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning. The request meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances. As it relates to this location. Staffs reviewed the requests and recommends approval with conditions of the preliminary plat as outlined. Staff therefore recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat for the Oak Grove subdivision. Onto the city council and that would be based on the findings and subject to the conditions in your report. Um, I will just make reference to number thirteen, cause the first twelve are, are standard. Uh, the fifteen foot wide area on the west side, which is done in this green over here. Let me get my. Pencil, but this area along here. Um. Will also serve as a landscape strip as required. And this should be labeled as such before moving on to the city council's agenda. So that would be the only thing that staff feels we need to, um. Put on this. Now, your, your report, if you're looking in your. Your tablet had a few extra conditions, but they've all been taken care of. So we don't need to worry about those others anymore. And so that's why I think there were like fifteen or sixteen.
Sixteen.
Down to these thirteen, cause all those other items have been addressed. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions, uh, the commissioners might have on this preliminary plat.
My, this Commissioner Holly, this is on two forty. Is that, is that that subdivision where those pretty white walls are over there, Drew? You know?
Um. It's kind of over by that one big house that's a monster of a property.
Yeah, yeah.
It's really fancy. Yeah, this is due, due west. I'll bring it up here on the.
Yeah, I drove by there today. That's, that's good looking, yeah.
And, um, let me bounce out of here. And scroll down. Yeah, it's, it's basically right here and I'll pencil that out for you.
Yeah.
This is the area. Yeah, and this is this really big development, you know, single home.
Right.
Uh, you know, we're looking at this property right here.
Right.
And then, um, keep your mind on that. I'm just gonna. Scroll down and show you how close the school is, the new intermediate. Is right there, so. I'll still put this back up here and that's what you can see down here is the intermediate.
It's almost adjacent to, or kitty corner from.
Yes.
Yeah, those are big lots, for sure.
Well, the road, two forty west is a gravel road. Is that, who, are we putting in improvements? What's going on there?
Well, they'll have to improve up to half the road, up to here. And they'll probably go this, uh, my pencil's off again. And, uh, change my color. Yeah, they'll have to bring the road up this way, at least. Up to here.
And, and didn't we approve something on the other side of that road a few months ago?
Yes, over here you have a, I think we did a preliminary plat.
Right.
So these guys will probably, and it's the same developer. So they'll probably, which is good, they'll take care of the roadway here. And then just to also add a little bit more to your palette. Uh, this just got rezoned or is in the two-week holding period. No, it just got rezoned up here. Uh, where the blue star is now. By again, the same developer.
Yeah.
Wow.
Is that, what did we rezone that at? I don't remember.
Ten thousand.
So it's R one lots. Okay.
That, that one where the blue star is now, wasn't that R one eight?
No, it's R one fifteen.
One fifteen. I remember Commissioner Musso liked that higher density.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember that.
This Commissioner Hanson, you had mentioned them improving the road coming from, uh, the south, moving north. Do they have the option to improve the road from north to south if they wanted to?
Yes.
So as long as they have access to that development?
Yeah, this will be the shorter one, cause half the, you know, part of the road's kind of already built here.
Yeah.
That the school put in. So then they'll just have to bring it up from here to here, but that's their option to come from the north or the south.
But those other developments are theirs and so they'll end up doing that too.
It'll all tie together. You're correct, yeah. So this whole road will be built out in this area.
That's why I was wondering if there's a chance they came from north to south and didn't finish that last piece. Because they're gonna finish north, obviously, because those are also their developments.
Yeah, and again, disregard the RA one, that just barely got changed a week ago.
Yeah. So there's no concern about not having that improved all the way from the school all the way to Merrill?
Well, they, they, they're not responsible for the other half over here.
Right.
Um, so.
But I mean.
Will be at least half a, half, half a roadway. They'll have to, you know, it'll probably have a little bit of a bend to it, but it'll allow for a lane each direction.
Okay, that's what I want. Okay, thank you.
It's a little more than half a roadway, because in most cases it's half plus whatever they need to, to fulfill the two lanes.
Okay.
A minimum of twenty-seven feet, Drew.
Yeah.
Commissioners, do we have any other questions or comments for staff before we open the public hearing?
Sidewalk or anything, or is it just road?
Now, what's that?
Is there curb gutter and sidewalk along with that improvement or just road?
You can see that cross section right there. So two forty is a sixty-foot right-of-way. So you can see the two and a half foot curb gutter with sidewalk behind it.
Okay.
Yeah, the road we were just talking about right here, what Brandon was referring to is a sixty-foot. You can see that here's the center. And then they're going four foot beyond that to meet that minimum.
All right, commissioners, we'll open up the public hearing for item six A. Denise, are there any comments for that item?
We have no public comments on this item.
Okay, I look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Holly, I move that we close the public hearing on item six A.
Second that.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed this evening? Okay, I'll close the public hearing on six A. Any other comments or questions from the commissioners? If not, I look for a motion.
This commissioner Holly, I'd like to make a motion on item six A. That we pass along and approve to the city council for their approval, item six A. The um. Preliminary plat for Oak Grove subdivision located approximately two forty west and twenty eight hundred south. Applicant is proposing eight lots on seven point two seven acres. The zoning designation at this particular location is single family residential fifteen thousand square foot, R one dash fifteen. With uh, the surrounding zoning as noted. I would uh, make a motion that we approve this and send it on to the city council for their approval.
Commissioner Sheal, I would second that.
Of course, subject to the findings in the report as well.
I'm sorry, you are exactly right.
I have a motion by commissioner Holly. I have a second by commissioner Shield, Shield. I will do individual voting. Commissioner Holly.
Aye.
Commissioner Shield.
Aye.
Commissioner Fitzonfu.
Hi.
Commissioner Musso.
Aye.
Okay, I, I am I as well, commissioner Hanson. Motion passes unanimously. We'll now move to item, agenda item number seven A. As this is a zone change, it's also a public hearing. For consideration, recommendation to the city council, a zone change request Z dash twenty dash nineteen. To change from A twenty agricultural minimum twenty acres to an R one ten. Single family residential, minimum of ten thousand square foot lots. Located approximately Majestic Drive in Washington Field Road. Applicant is Dave Nassal.
It thank you. The applicant has stated requesting the zone change of approximately nine point three nine acres. The requested change is as stated from the agricultural twenty acre. Zoning to a proposed single family residential ten thousand square foot minimum, or as we refer to as the R one ten zoning designation. The R one ten request is for the purpose of developing this nine point three nine acres into a future residential development. This particular location has a general planned land use designation of low density residential. The surrounding zoning to this parcel is R one fifteen and RA one residential agricultural one acre to the north. A twenty to the west and east and A twenty and RA one to the south. Uh, I think you see that on your map pretty well. Um, staff has no concerns with the proposal zone change because it is meeting the general plan for this future development. Um, in this particular uh, location. Now, the uh, low density residential allows for R one ten and R one twelve zoning designations. They're seeking the R one ten on both these properties, but we're just running it as one because they're, it's the same owners in the family. So this whole area will just go to R one ten, both these uh, parcel IDs is the request. With that said, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of Z dash twenty dash nineteen for the zone change request from. Ag twenty to the proposed single family residential ten thousand square foot minimum. Or the R one ten zoning designation onto the city council. And that's just based on the findings below. Um, in your report and I'll be glad to a- answer any questions commissioners might have on this proposal.
So Drew, that little chunk is to the south of the three point three four acre parcel. So that where you have your marker right there.
Mm-hmm.
This, do they not own that also?
I do not think that they do.
So is that probably Staley's then?
It might be. Um, let me.
Yeah, I looked it up on county records. It was Staley.
That's Staley's?
Yeah.
Okay.
My thought.
Because it would make obviously more sense if you did all of that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you can see it, it right there on your screen now. That blue box goes all the way down. It's all part of the Stavy Farm.
Hey Drew, just out of curiosity, um, since there's been, you know, the, the sugar plum. I think that sugar plum over there and now this going in.
Well, this is rusted hills.
Or um, what's that one across front? Oh, never mind, never mind then. Um. Well, just out of curiosity, with all the development going on, has there ever been any complaints about the smell over there at Stavy Farm or anything like that?
Well, you know, to actually be honest with you. Not as much as you might think there might be because again, most people are moving into this knowing it's there. So it's kind of hard. I mean, if it came afterwards, but um. To be, I, I don't really think I've, I may have had one person, but they said, you know what? I grew up on a farm as a kid and it reminds me of home. That's the only one I think I've got from anybody in that area. So they said, yeah, it's, you know. Other people may not like it, but it just reminds me of my childhood. So.
Trust me, smell is an issue because.
Yeah.
I, I, I think that's why Sullivan hasn't, still hasn't developed that forty acres north of there, you know?
I think, I think the dust control is the worst.
Yeah.
Is that like an extension of the canal on the east side of that property right there? Is there an easement or what is that? Is that anything that we're talking about?
The, the canal, there is a, yeah, and I don't know if there's an easement or whatever, but this isn't really part of your zone change.
Okay.
I think this is still owned by the same family that's, you know, on there tonight. Um, so.
And, and my second question is in part, when this development does begin at some point in the future. Are they responsible for any road improvements on Washington Fields Road?
Yes, they'll have to improve Majestic and Washington Fields Road on this half. Absolutely, they would, yes.
Okay. I, I guess my question about the canal there is, is that is not planned on being an entrance or. Are they able to plan on using that as an entrance or something like that? It sounds like no.
No, because if it's, like I say, even though they may own it, there's probably the canal has an easement over it. And it's the canal's easement, so.
Alright.
If you look across the street on Majestic by the school, there's the canal easement right there. We actually put a trail on top of that. An asphalt trail that goes back over to Queens Ridge and it'll go farther north as well.
Have you heard anything Brandon about make, continuing that trail onto this property?
I, not yet, not at this point. I'm sure, I'm sure we'll have some discussion, but.
Yeah, that'll be part of our conversations as we go forward on plating.
Okay. All right, commissioners, any other comments before I open the public hearing?
Nope.
Okay, at this time I'll open the public hearing for item seven A, the zone change. Uh, Denise, are there any public comments for this particular agenda item?
I'm just checking one more time just to make sure. Nope, we have no public comments on this item.
Okay, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Holly, I make a motion with close the public hearing on item seventy.
Do I have a second?
A second then.
I have a motion.
Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, we had one come in just as you were closing it. So hold on just a second. Let me grab it for you.
Okay.
Sorry. That they were a little slow getting it. And. Okay, this comes from Shannon Bennett. Okay, Shannon Bennett in the Fields area says under, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, sorry. Understanding development is progress, however, would rather see less homes. With larger lots, keeping the traffic down in the school zones and neighborhoods in general. That's it.
Okay. Thank you Denise. Commissioners, any comments in addition to the public comment by the trigger?
I just wonder if uh, eventually on Majestic Drive and Washington Fields Road, if there's gonna be a signal there. Brendan, is there plans for that?
There are, um, not, not right now, but I know there's been discussion about it. I mean, it's, it's pretty inevitable right there.
Yeah.
I can't give you a date for any other.
Nah, I appreciate that, but boy, it's tough getting through there when school lets out.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Maybe this isn't a question for this particular agenda item, but at some point in the future, I would be interested in knowing. How they will handle construction traffic when this starts to be developed, given what was just said about the difficulty for schools. I would assume. I don't know, that's a tough one because Majestic and Washington Fields Roads are both. Busy at the right time of the right day. So anyway. Um, I'll look again for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second that.
All right, I have a, a uh. I just went, my, my mind just went crazy.
Motion.
I have a second to close the public hearing. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hey, that closes the public hearing on item seven A. Commissioners, any other additional comments or questions for staff?
No, sure gonna get crowded out there though.
But they, Drew, are they planning probably ten thousand square foot lots on that? Do you know?
Um, I, you know, I don't know. I would imagine so. I mean, but they'll probably come in between ten and eleven. Um, just depend on how the, you know, the land works out with putting lots in, but I would, I would venture to guess it's gonna be as close to ten as they can get.
And you're, what's on a ten thousand square foot lot per acre, you're getting what, three and point two three or three and a half?
Three point five roughly is what, you know, after the roads come out and uh.
So you're looking at thirty.
Tension and things like that. Yeah.
You're looking at about thirty homes is all. Roughly.
Probably, yes.
Okay. So it's, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna add to traffic that much, that particular little subdivision.
That's what I thought.
That's a good buffer. That gets a good buffer between the school and the farm myself.
Yeah. Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, uh, I look for a motion on item seven A.
I make a motion that we recommend approval to city council. Of Z dash twenty dash nineteen. A request to rezone approximately nine point three nine acres. At approximately the southeast corner of Washington Fields Road and Majestic Drive. From the current agricultural A twenty to propose single family residential. Um, R one ten. With the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Commissioner Holly, I second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by commissioner Fitzonfu, I have a second by commissioner Holly. For individual voting, voting, commissioner Fitzonfu.
Hi.
Commissioner Holly.
Aye.
Commissioner Musso.
Aye.
Commissioner Shield.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson, I'm an I as well. The motion passes unanimously.
Now, commissioner Hanson, if I, I just wanna make note because we're in the last two months of the year and meetings, et cetera, this uh. This item will now go to city council, but it won't get to them until December ninth. Uh, just because there is no second meeting, that's the week of Thanksgiving. And so it'll be on the December ninth agenda for those watching and listening. Um, for a public hearing with the city council. Thank you.
Drew, what time did the city council meeting start for those?
They start at six PM.
Okay. Thank you. We will now circle back and visit item number five A if we're ready. Drew, can we check on you with that? Is ready to go?
Yeah, um, let me.
While you're getting that ready.
Can you guys see that? Okay.
Yes.
For those watching, listening, we are now revisiting an item that we postponed this evening. It's item five A. It's a plat revision. Uh, for consideration, Brio phase three, it's a preliminary plat applicant is Cole West.
I'm just gonna highlight because there's a lot on this picture and I'm just gonna show you what we're talking about. It's just this area in the red. This is the three G area. So with that. Said, let me find my. Report, there we go. The applicant is requesting approval of an amended preliminary plat for the Brio phase three G subdivision. Uh, the reason for this amendment request is to reconfigure the plat dwelling use going from the fourteen townhomes. Which would you'd see in the three F that's right east of there. That's how it did look. Into a new format to eleven single family detached patio dwelling units. The area of coverage is eight point two three three acres. The area was recently granted a PCD amendment changing the use from townhomes to the single family detached patio home concept. The patio homes will be laid out in such a way that they mirror garages and mirror courtyard areas. Let me go to that exhibit so you know what I'm talking about. And um. Let me get rid of that red. And that's what this exhibit with the green is. And this will give this particular area, uh, uh, give it a more open feel. Uh, when they brought this back, staff was kind of concerned about the narrowness of the lots. Um, because the setbacks for these particular units are five feet. So working with the developer. Um, they came in just to let you know, so they're gonna mirror courtyards. And mirror garages. There would be, just be one area that we won't be able to do that, but this particular area. And we're doing that because these homes are probably gonna have, some of them will have a side load front door. Or the front door will be set back quite a bit. So we're trying to give as much open space between the units. Face to face in here to not make it feel so crammed in is, is the, the theory behind that. We're also back here and let me change my color. The block walls will be limited for backyards and everything. They won't be able to come any closer than this area. Uh, so they can have, you know, a block wall here and here. And then through here. So the block walls will not be coming and separating the units again to keep that openness. And so the, the applicants were willing to do that. So that's the two main things about this development I wanted to point out and they're in our conditions. Uh, just to try um, to help open this area and make it a little bit more appealing. In this uh, subdivision. So. With that said, staff's reviewed the proposed amended preliminary plat, finds it conforms to the PT, PCD zoning. Uh, the subdivision also remains in compliance with the subdivision ordinance of the city. Staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend approval of the amended preliminary plat for the Brio three G subdivision. Onto the city council and that's based on the original findings and subject to the original conditions with a few of them added. The additional ones are fourteen, fifteen and sixteen. Uh, I asked the ad to throw number seventeen in there because it's normally my number twelve. And um, so, but that's just the LID requirements of the state is number seventeen, but. Uh, the other ones basically configured to these layouts of facing the courtyards. Uh, face to face and the garages back to back. Uh, on this and that's what those, basically those fourteen, fifteen and sixteen point out. So with that said. I'll be glad to answer any questions the commissioners might have on this uh, amended preliminary plat for three G.
This commissioner Holly, um, so these are single family patio homes. Are they single story? Are they Rambler Ranch style or are they?
I promise you they'll be single story because that was the whole thing about three G.
Right.
Was they were two story townhomes and everybody said, we're not gonna buy this. So. They came back with this new proposal of single story and let, let's go back to those. I'm glad you brought that out. There is the exhibit in your packet. Um.
It shows.
The one that was asked about and we'll show you this, these are the floor plans and all the elevations on these.
The elevations, okay.
So they're all single story. As I kind of scroll through, you can see and. Um.
As we, as we talked about a couple of months ago, old people don't want two stories, so.
No, and that's, that's what drove this whole.
Yeah.
Three G change.
Good.
Even part of the PCD amendment because they had townhomes up on the north end. Remember, we went through that whole thing and they're in their PCD amendment.
Right.
And it was all about getting rid of or not having two story of any sort, so.
Makes sense.
I find that so terribly interesting that these guys, because they understand the market and know the market are going to. Single family detached. Single-family detached, small units as opposed to flipping townhomes everywhere.
Can I see the, can I see the floor plan one more time, Drew? I just wonder how many.
There's several, they're, they're, you know, this is just a good example of it. They, they go from about a thousand to about thirteen fifty.
Yeah, that's, that was my question, trying to see what the, what the square footage of this is going to be. Two bedrooms, two bedrooms, two baths.
There is an optional third bedroom as, you know, you can see up here.
Yeah.
But that, and again, one of the notes says if someone takes an optional third bedroom on one of the units. The unit next door won't be able to do it so that we don't confine that face to face, you know, breaking that down.
Yeah, I, I like your recommendation on item sixteen as well, that they got window facing window, they put something in between, so.
Yeah, a large bush that'll cover that or a tree.
Yep, I like that.
So they've agreed to all these, you know, when, when we sat down with them, so.
So the back, going back to the exhibit where you have the green and the, showing the bushes and stuff, Drew? The one, yeah, that one. So you were talking about the fences and not blocking off part of that open space.
Right, the condition limits them. See where they say the rear wall?
Right.
That, that's, they're, they're going to keep that, you know, so here's a gate on the garage side to get back there.
Okay, so they are going to have, so they will have backyards and they're going to have twenty-two feet to twenty. Well, ranging from what, twenty-two to thirty-two square feet, linear feet of backyard. That's nice.
Correct, and it, and it will be blocked in. But the black walls.
How high?
Sorry.
How, how high? Three feet, six feet?
Well, six feet's the standard.
Okay. Nice private backyard.
Below, you just can't go above.
Yeah. Seems like that's what they're going to these days, smaller, smaller footprint and. Now, this is PU D C, so they'll only own the, own the footprint, right?
Oh, no, they will own the lot.
They will own the lot.
Yeah, the lot will be theirs, you know, the landscape area, the yards, they'll all be theirs.
Ah, interesting.
Yeah, that's why this is a, a full bone plat of, of lots. Nope, you know, not common area around the homes, but. They do have a community trail when you enter in up here. You can see that on this little bit darker green.
Right.
Try to, yeah, there you go. But that's really the only open common area within this particular one.
All right, commissioners, any other comments or questions for staff? If there is not, then I look for a motion on item five A.
This is Commissioner Holly. I'll make that motion that we send to city council for their approval. Based on our approval. For the preliminary plat for Brio three G subdivision. Changing it from their P C D for townhomes to a single-family detached dwellings. Item five A on our agenda with the findings and conditions listed below.
A second then.
All right, on item five A, I've got a motion by Commissioner Holly and a second by Commissioner Fitzomfo. Individual voting, Commissioner Holly.
Aye.
Commissioner Fitzomfo. I believe that was an I, correct?
Yep.
Commissioner Musso.
Aye.
Commissioner Shield.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson, I'm I as well. Item five A passes unanimously. That concludes the agenda items that we have for the evening. Is there anything that needs to be brought before the commission or staff at this time?
Well, commissioners, if I may, I'll just point out, we are trying all we can for you. There is no meeting on the eighteenth. There was no agenda items brought in, so you're off through the rest of the month. We will, of course, meet on the second. And Kathy and I are trying all we can do to bump anything that would be, try to come in on the sixteenth to try to bump it to the second. We may end up with a several, you know, kind of a loaded night that night, but I think you'll be okay knowing that. You wouldn't have to come in till the new year, if that's all right with you gentlemen. Any opposed to that?
I like the sounds of that, but I would like to just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, happy safe holiday this, this November and. And it's just been a, a pleasure working with you guys this year. So enjoy your Thanksgiving holiday and I guess we'll see each other in December unless we're opposed.
Yeah, the same. Denise, Kathy, Drew, Brandon, Jeff, thank you guys for your help with everything that you do. We appreciate it.
So I, I hate to bring this question up because I always do. Are we ever going to go back to having live sessions? I know the, the numbers are up again or whatever, but are we ever going to go back to meeting in person?
Well, ever, I would say yes. Are we ever? And that, that was easy.
Not in the foreseeable, foreseeable future, I guess, is how I should have phrased the question.
That's one of those open-ended questions, Brian.
Let's put that, Kathy, make a note and put that on our agenda for the second. Just because the numbers are so high right now still. And so we'll talk about that maybe for a December second meeting and see how everybody's feeling at that point. Or see where we're at at that point.
Okay.
So for me, so commissioners, right now, as you guys probably know, the mandate, the state mandate from a governor is no, no gatherings of ten or more. It, it, the preface to that is no social gatherings of ten or more, which. This wouldn't technically qualify us because this is a pub, public gathering and more of a business gathering, so the state. Even the governor's office hasn't really well-defined that, but I'm pretty sure as these numbers continue to. I think we all hope they start going down relatively quickly, but in case they don't. I would suspect just in all, in all likelihood that. Will be until the first of the year anyway, until we, we talk about it to, to the extent that it makes. Good sense based upon the decisions you guys have made already about wanting to stay separated and we, as a staff. We appreciate the fact that you would probably much rather be gathered together. And discussing this together with the public and as I think for us, it's, it's easier in terms of just making it all work. From a practical standpoint, I think the effort in, in not doing that is harder for all of us, including for you guys. So we appreciate just the patience you've had with it and we certainly hoping you all be back together because we as staff. We enjoy being with you guys irrespective of what you may have heard otherwise. We all enjoy being with you.
Well, that is irrespective of what we've heard.
I'm seeing Jeff sleep, then he turns on his camera real quick.
Yeah, yeah, real quick.
Well, did we ever get a manager? I guess we did.
Yes, he started Monday. Jeremy Redd, he came over from Blanding.
Okay.
And so he is here and working out of his office, so. Yeah, this is his first week. He's again, started Monday morning.
Are we going to get a chance to meet him even virtually? Just to say hello and welcome?
I may see if he's available just about the beginning of your next meeting, so you can get a, if you haven't met him before then.
Yeah.
Just to get a face with a name and I'll ask him if he doesn't mind sticking around on that, that particular night of the second of December.
Great, that'd be nice.
And my guess is knowing him as little, as little as Drew and I do know him at this point, I, I, I would say my guess would be. There's also an outside chance he reaches out just to welcome, to introduce himself to you guys too, even if it's just by telephone is my guess.
Past week I was walking through a home that was being built and I had my helmet on from motorcycle. And I ran into somebody who introduced himself to me as Jeremy Redd, the new city manager. And I kind of started laughing, one of the chances. So I've met him. He's a great kid. He's a great individual. Look forward to working with him.
You, you said kid. Is he younger, Jason?
I almost said kid, but I tried to refrain that because I have no idea how old he is.
Everybody I meet is a kid, so I'm, you know, it's just in context, so.
He's a kid compared to at least one person on staff that's just recently gone on video, so he's a kid to somebody like me, yes.
Good definition.
I always think they look older than me, then I find out they're ten years younger. Just shake my head, so.
So gentlemen, with all that and ladies, with that being said, I look for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Commissioner Holly, I would like to make an emotion, a motion that we adjourn tonight's meeting, November fourth.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Good night, everybody. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. We'll see you later.
Thanks. Good job, Jason.
Thank you.